Given the task to do opening prayer. So let us invite God to be here with us this evening. Almighty God, ruler of all people. Thank you for this gathering here today. Thank you for giving us the chance to see another day. Lord, I invite you to be in the midst as we come together as one body to lift up our country and our leaders. Please protect our country from division and challenges that challenges our ability to live lives pleasing to you. Forgive our shortcomings. Purify our hearts, Lord. Teach us how to forgive. Teach us how to love more. Teach us how to heal. Lord, I pray for national revival and spiritual healing. Heal our land.
That was phase one. Phase two, when we entered government, we met the some of the houses in phase two are already built. But in those houses, you had no closets, you had no cupboards, the bathroom was not outfitted, nothing. There were no tanks in case, you know, there is no water, you know, the people would just suffer for lack of water. What we did, we ensured that cupboards were installed. We ensured that the closets were installed. We ensured that the bathroom was outfitted. We we ensured that when you come into the house, you are coming into a house ready to live in. Now, what does it send? How you can be calling a house a low income house? And when someone come in, they say I have to get money to pay a carpenter to build all these things. Now, what we did? We entered into an agreement with the banks and the financial institutions and so that people can get to own a house or a property. Now, this property, the market value for it is over two hundred thousand dollars. We are selling them for approximately seventy five thousand dollars. And if you want to talk about lifting people out of poverty, this is how you do it. Because if someone buy one of these properties, basically, what will happen? They will be getting equity in that property of over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now, if you acquire a property, you can use that equity to fund a business idea, to help your child get a better education, and you can name it. And this is how we take people out of poverty, not boasting about having people in a poor and vulnerable state. Let me go on. Education, if you want to talk about poverty again, education is one of the most effective way you you can use to take people out of poverty. What we did when we came into office in twenty twenty two, we remove all the fees from secondary school so we can make it free for everyone. In addition, we made the tuition fees for college and Nilo. We took it off eight hundred and ten dollars. So now, one can go into college and Nilo without paying tuition fees. This is where you take people out of poverty. And sometimes, why Nilo is important? Because college is where you learn academics, but also Nilo is where you learn the skills. And not everyone is academically inclined. Some people are better with the skills, the plumbing, the electrical, just name it. And by doing so, this year, we got the most amount of children and people to register for college in the history of Grenada, Kyoko and PD Martin. Let me go again. I wouldn't be too long. Because I can go for the night. Now, we, we, we accept that sometimes people want to come back to our tri island state, but our health care is not in good shape. Now, immediately, well, during the campaign, we, we said that our mission will be to improve health care. And the prime minister's dream is to build a new hospital. And not just a new hospital, but a new teaching hospital. It's a shame that we have S U, one of the best universities in the world when it comes to medicine, and our health care is in shambles. What happened is that when the student finished their academics, they have to travel to the USA or the UK to do their practical. But if we have a teaching hospital, they can do it in Grenada. And our citizens can benefit from the doctors who are in Grenada. What we did immediately, we acquired approximately eighty nine acres of land in the Cali Vina area. And we are now in conversation with developers who are willing to come and fund the hospital for themselves. And what we want to do again is to enter into a PPP, a public private partnership. But in doing so, we accept that we have to fix the, or we have to, we have to to introduce the national health insurance. And when I say national health insurance, I mean an insurance where the citizens of Grenada can use that in order to access health care at a lower cost. And if we do that, we can fix the problem of of health care in our country, where you in the diaspora, you don't, you do not have to really hesitate if you want to come back to Grenada to live. Because you know that the health care facility will be top notch. And this is what we want to do. Health care is number one on the agenda. We have skill training, number two on the agenda. And also, I spoke about the Chinese housing at the beginning. But we want to to do some Grenadian style housing in the future. I'm going to say in the future, I mean, starting next year. So we have a project called Project Five Hundred. And that project is being led by the Honorable Minister of Social Development, Philip Tellerford. We have already identified lands in Bouches-Jou and other places. And the next step is to get developers to come, get local contractors to come, get the banks involved. And we're going to do a project called Project Five Hundred, where we are going to build five hundred Grenadian style housing. And when we do that, we are not going to stop there. We are not going to stop there. We are going to continue. And next five hundred, and next five hundred, and next five hundred until we solve the housing situation in Grenada. Also, Grenada is a beautiful place. Beautiful. Sometimes we travel to the Bahamas and so on. We see all Miami, and we see all the beautiful palm trees and so everything nice. And when you come back to Grenada, we have beauty, and we are not making use of it. So my ministry have a project called the Visible Transformation Project. And that project is where we look to beautify Grenada. When you, when you go to Grenada, you will see all old vehicles by the side of the road. Sometimes I find I want to come out of fire. No space to pass because vehicles are just blocking up the space. We have started collecting the derelict vehicles already. We have started correcting and collecting derelict boats. We are in a process right of cleaning up the water because sometimes you have yachters come into Grenada and settle outside and dump all the waste in the water, destroying our coral reef. We have already started to beautify the Wall Street area. We have already started to beautify the Laguna Road. And as I speak right now, we have a crew in St. George's that are beautifying the St. George's area. Now, some will give you the idea and play politics. Like in Grenada, it's doom and gloom. And you can blame them, that's probably their duty. And when I say their duty, they are getting paid. You have, you have the opposition party who are paying people to paint a negative stain on Grenada. And that is sad. When you hear a former prime minister coming and doubting the RGP of the Royal Grenada Police Force, who in the region is rated top? This is sad, and it shows you desperation. But I tell you, people, rest assured that Grenada is in good hands. Our prime minister is one of the smartest individual I've ever met. He's cool, calm, and collected. He has a plan, he has a vision. And our job in cabinet is to support him so that we can reach the level that Grenada needs to reach. So I just want to say, hold on tight, we need your support in the diaspora, and we need every Grenadian support. I tell people every day, the time for playing politics is over. Grenada belongs to all of us, and we have to join in to help build our country. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Minister. At this juncture, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to pause and introduce to you for the first time here in New York, our new council general is in the house, Brother Michael Present. You'll be seeing a lot more of him, but he's here today to perform one simple duty, and that is to assist in taking away the minister from our meeting. So before he does that, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of break the tradition, and instead of taking questions later on, if you have questions based on the presentation given by the minister, you can come forward to this mic and ask your question. Or if you have comments you wish to make, we will entertain that also. You mean the presentation was so good that you have no questions? Come to the mic. Yeah, the minister has to travel. He has an important duty to perform on behalf of the people of Grenada. So we are grateful to have him here tonight.
Good afternoon, beautiful people of Grenada, Kyoko and PD Martin. I do not have a question, I have a concern. Everything sounds nice, I want to know about Grenville. Grenville is like a shanty town. My concern is what has been done for Grenville in terms of beautification. That's it. Thank you.
So, one, two. So for Grenville, the same things apply with the derelict vehicles. The cleanup, we have done a cleanup in Grenville already, and we are still continuing to deal with the derelict vehicles in Grenville. The four MPs for Grenville or the four caretakers for Grenville, well, sorry, right. They have a plan. Part of the plan will be to take back some of the lands and to backfill and to put some areas for recreation in Grenville. But we also have a bigger problem in Grenville. And we have done a study because every time rain falls, Grenville floods. It was said the problem was fixed, but it was, it only became worse. Right? So part of the problem would be, sorry, part of the solution would be to install pumps certain places so that the water can be pumped out and not just stay and flood the area. But also, let me just mention that when you go to Grenada, you see your mangoes, your golden apples, your fruits on the ground spoiling. But if you look back in the days of the great Moyes Bishop, there was a time when we were, we had factories and we are doing our pulps and juices and so. But that was in the eighties. Forty years passed. And it's like we regress instead of progress. So one of our plan is to bring back agroprocessing in Grenada. And I am not just, just saying it. Anyone could say anything, but you need to back it up. So when I went to India two months ago, I met with the Indian government and they pledged to give Grenada one million US dollars in equipment, any equipment we want, to start our factories. Now, we have better news. When I go back to Grenada, the delegation will be visiting Grenada. And they said, Andy, that one million is no two million. So we have a, we have a, we have a chance to really push agroprocessing in Grenada. And our dream is not to have it in St. George's because everything is centered in St. George's. But we have to start promoting the urban to rural migration. And if we can have factories in the north and in the middle of the island, what it means is that infrastructure can be improved, housing can be improved, and everyone do not have to return to St. George's for a job. But we can have the rural areas being developed, and this is what we want. Now, again, we have a case right now in Grenada where the ABC Islands are looking for products to import. And they have engaged Grenada. They have engaged the Ministry of Agriculture, and we are not working with them. So now we have a chance to export our product. But why do we need factories? Because we can add value to the product and get more from it. Also, when you travel to the diaspora, you have London, you have Canada, you have New York. Do you know in the diaspora, you have twice as much Grenadians living in the diaspora than in Grenada? So why are we not exporting our products to the diaspora? Let you, the people of Grenada, Kyoko and PD Martin, consume it. This is what we have to do. This is what they call transformation. And I will tell you, give us two years. Just give us two years, and you will see a difference in Grenada. And it is not just talk, it's not just poor and vulnerable, but but it's about moving Grenada from one stage to the other. And this is what we want to do. Thank you.
Anyone has any more questions and comments? Please come up. If you can speak loud enough. You got to come to the mic. Well, in order for it to go through, yeah. All right? You will be global, you are the internet. No, that's a better one for there. Yeah, that one is better for there.
Hi, good afternoon. I just have a quick question. You talked about involvement from foreign countries such as India and China. And you spoke about a lot of numbers in terms of funds that they're giving us. Only one, if I'm not mistaken, is in terms of grants. So I want to know, what's the catch? What are we giving these countries in return for all of this capital that they're giving us? Because we don't want Nigeria, we don't want things where we're selling off our island in order to build it up. I think that holding the integrity of what Grenada is and who Grenada is is really important to me as a child of Grenadians and someone who values her Grenadian heritage. So what's the catch? Like, what are we giving these foreign nations in exchange for all of this money that they're giving us?
Now, hold on. Can go down one, Junior? Oh, okay. So I can tell you about India. Saint Vincent already got the grant from India. Soon, I'm already got the grant from India. Now, when I travel, no, okay, no, when I leave here, I'm going to South Korea. In about ten minutes, I'll have to leave to go. Now, when I travel, I don't travel empty handed. I travel with some concepts and some, some concept of what we will need in Grenada. So when the meetings are finished, I will sit down with the Minister of Trade and say, hey, you know, we will need X, Y, Z in Grenada, what can you give, if possible? And there are grant funding outside. The UK gave us grant to fix our infrastructure and to fix the road system. Grant we don't have to pay back. China gave us a grant for housing that we don't have to pay back. As far as I know, there is no catch. The grants are available or were available in India just to access. And no one in Grenada was doing it, but I saw it and accessed it. Right? So to say that what we have to give back, as far as I know, there is nothing we have to give back. And also, we have, you have a lot of grants outside, especially in the area of climate change. Because what happened is that the developed world, they do all the pollutants for the cause of the climate change. But we are the one in the Caribbean and so that face the lasting or get the lasting effects of it. And there's a lot of grants in climate change. But you have to focus, you have to know where they are, and you have to get them to improve your country. If you go to take a loan for everything, you will be in debt till you can't pay. And I think that was happened to some of the African countries. They took loans over what they could pay. And it was, and that's a strategy that was done in order to keep them at a certain level. You see, there are more than one ways for someone to keep you attached to them. Right? And, and, and I have no apology in saying, this is the concept of the NMP. You understand? And let me just say that before, because I must say that. I want to go after, but I must say that. As you're in politics, you have to have strategies. And the NMP strategy is this. If everybody in this room have to depend on me for a dollar or a million every day, I will have you as a puppet. But if, in politics, no. If I were to liberate you and make you independent, that's a chance because I cannot have control of you. Now, the NMP strategy is to give you a handout every day. Have you coming back for that handle ten years after? And you depend on that handle. Our strategy is to uplift people, get them independent, get them working. Sometimes they may not see it, no, because they are accustomed to just getting a dollar every day. But in time to come, they will see the benefit of having a plan, a long term plan, so that you do not have to depend on anyone. But you as a man, as a woman, can be able to feed your family by yourself. This is our strategy. So to answer your question, there is no catch to it. It's a grant given to us. We accept it, we look for it, we find it, and we use that grant to build Grenada. Thanks.
So we only have about time for about two more comments or questions. So if anybody or two people, please come in the line here and get your question answered or make your comment so that we can get on with the business and wish the minister a safe journey. So.
Hello, everyone. My name is Simelda Forster Evans. I'm from Birch Grove. And our representative talked about farming. And I'd like to know, like, some of us have lands sitting there that in the bushes because it cannot be worked, which in my heart, I want to work my lands and plant fruits and vegetables that we can use, but there is no road to get into the land. So are you willing to help to, to make roads to go into the land so that we can farm? That's one, one thing. The second thing is, I was concerned about of fruits that we have spoiling. And I'm happy to hear that you're going to start processing the fruits that we have. The next thing is health care, which very pressing on my heart. I'm a returning resident to Grenada, and the standards seem to be different. Once you open your mouth, if you don't say adé, adé, they know you're not. I mean, it's the truth. They know exactly that you were away for some time. And, and it seems as though, it seems as though there is a different standard for those of us returning residents. So I'd like to know what standard will be set for returning residents with regards to health care? Will there be some kind of package that we can pay into? Or what would the standard be? Because although most of us have insurance up here, it does not work with us when we're in Grenada. We have to pay for everything, or we have to fly out if we get sick. So what kind of standard will be set for those of us who return to Grenada to live? And a lot of people want to come back, but they're afraid because the medical care is so bad. Thank you.
Good question. Good question. So I have to remember not to, not to have a little accent when I go back. But the plan is, the plan is to improve health care service. It not just the infrastructure, but also the soft part of it. We talked about customer service and so. But let me just go back. First of all, we have to appreciate the health care workers and appreciate the sacrifice that they make every day. That is why last year, in the last year budget, we give everyone across the board a five hundred dollars increase. Right? And again, that is why we have, we will be introducing the national health insurance. So because a lot, well, you have a lot of the stuff is free when it comes to health care in Grenada and in the hospital. But if you want to have an efficient service, you have to pay. Right? Because it's an expensive thing to run. And I've been hearing since before I entered government, medication, lack of medication, whole sorts of things. And we have to fix it. That is why we will be doing a PPP, a public private partnership, so that we can have the best quality health or service. We can have even the equipment, everything optimal. And we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but we can copy the services from the more developed countries. And I think if we improve the infrastructure, we introduce the national health insurance, where people who want to access basic services can do so. I think this is where we have to go. We have cases in Grenada where people are on dialysis. Their kidneys are failing, and they cannot pay to do the dialysis. So sometimes they have to take three treatments a week, they may have to take one or two. When you look at the amount of money that they are owing for the dialysis, it's a lot. Imagine someone can benefit from the National Farm Health Insurance. Where they do not have to go and find all this amount of money to do dialysis, if not, they are dead man. This is where we have to go to improve health care. So we met a system that was damaged for a long time, and we are determined to fix it. Because if we fix health care, it is directly related to the economy of the country. If we can get more people coming back to live in Grenada, you're talking about the more, more income will be spending. If you have more spending, you have more employment, and it can trigger off. And that is what we need. So your point is taken, but we are determined to fix it. And we will not take no for an answer. And we want to fix it not just this year or next year or the next ten years or so. We want to fix it in the first term. And our prime minister is bent on that, and that's his personal project. I can tell you, no one takes health care more important than the prime minister. So we are on a senior cry, we hear a cry, but we will try to fix it. Thanks.
Sisters and brothers, I'm sorry, this is, that was the last question because we have to make sure that our minister gets to the airport on time so that he does not miss his flight. And by the minister, we want to wish you safe travels and continue to do your work and do the work of the government. And we really are grateful that you were able to come here to New York and celebrate with us this weekend as we, the New York Chapter, celebrate the twenty sixth anniversary of the NDC. So thank you again. And give our new council general another warm welcome. We will be seeing him some more. And thank you again, gentlemen, and safe journeys.
And I just want to say, New York, thank you for having me. It was a pleasure being here. I feel sad that I had to leave, really sad after leave. I wish I could have stayed longer. But brother, Bone and the New York Chapter, Larry Barry, Glenn Noel, Trey Forster, everyone from the executive of the New York Chapter, and everyone here, I just want to say thank you for your warm hospitality, and I feel like home in New York. So thank you very much.
ask all the questions. We have, we have time set aside to ask as many questions as possible and make your comments. So, um, we have some other speakers here, and we want to get on. As soon as the gentlemen clear the room, we will continue in a moment. So just give them a, a little time to vacate. Again, let's wish our minister safe journeys and enjoy your stay and bring back some goodies for us from South Korea. And of course, we have some very capable leaders on the planet up here at the head table, and they are capable of answering any of the questions that you are gonna have later on. So at this point, I want to once again introduce ourselves. I wanted, I want to actually greet the executive members of the New York Chapter, members of the New York Chapter, our friends and sisters in the audience again. And our next speaker is new to this work here, is an important person. We will be meeting this person very often. So at this point, ladies and gentlemen, I want to bring up to the, uh, mic, this gentleman is now the diaspora ambassador, Grenada's ambassador for diaspora affairs, which means that he is responsible for looking after the affairs of Grenadians in the diaspora. And I want to invite, he's also serving as a deputy PRO of the NDC, and he is the main program director of the Heartbeat, Brother Terrence Forster.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. For those of you who only just arrived a moment ago, um, let me recognize in his absence the Honorable Minister who is responsible for MIT. I don't need to call his name, do I? All right. Okay, let me also recognize, um, our ambassador to Cuba, His Excellency Glenn Noel. And earlier on, we had the Consul General, Mr. Brazan, who will be your representative here in New York on the ground. Also to recognize on the head table, the General Secretary of the National Democratic Congress Party, Mr. Barry, Larry Barry, the man himself. And of course, the Chairman of the New York NDC Chapter, the man who makes things happen in New York. This is, this is how they describe you, Brother Bourne, Bernard Bourne. And of course, many of you who are executive members and supporters of the chapter in New York, I welcome all of you here and all Grenadians far and wide who are here this evening. Let me just say that this is not just an NDC event. This is an event for Grenada and Grenadians. Let me therefore say that when Prime Minister Deacon Mitchell announced in Canada on the 1st of July at the gala which he attended, that I will be the diaspora ambassador, I too were shocked. Because that was the first time I was hearing it. So I just simply said to myself, well, here is a young prime minister who obviously knows what he wants, and he knows how to get it. So by the time he got back to Grenada, I said yes. Prime Minister Deacon Mitchell is a phenomenal prime minister. Honestly, for a young man, he really has vision, he knows exactly what he wants for the nation, and he is implementing bit by bit. This is the first time in my political history that I have seen a political party in government accomplish almost 40% of its manifesto mandate within under a year and a half. That is a phenomenal achievement, ladies and gentlemen. And this NDC administration is moving from strength to strength. Most of you would know that I was associated with another party. I had to speak the truth. And the, the speed, the tenacity, the capability, and the unity that exists within this NDC group, I have never seen it before. And therefore, I want to publicly recognize the strengths, the talent, the ability, the embracing and nurturing capacity of Prime Minister Deacon Mitchell and his team. Well, having given me this responsibility as ambassador with responsibility for the diaspora, for a brief moment, I thought it was just New York alone. But by the time I came into realization, it was Trinidad in the south to Beijing in the north and all the countries in and between. So it gives me the opportunity to interact with every overseas mission, embassy, high commission, which Grenada has throughout the world. And therefore, it is my responsibility and it, and my team to have good relationship with these offices and to interact with the Grenadian community, no matter where you are. So I want to say to you, we have to take advantage now of technology. And a session like this can very well be held successfully by Mr. Zoom. You agree? Great. Matter of fact, a, a young lady indicated that to me just this evening. I said, well, she is obviously thinking. She is a thinking lady. And yes, I would like to suggest that we have sessions like these at least once every quarter, so at least we can address the needs and concerns and just interact and so forth. Yesterday, when I went into Brooklyn, I had the opportunity to meet with the guy who runs Labbe Market, and we had a great conversation. And his main concern is the challenge of airlift. We have a serious problem, not just out of Grenada, but all the islands with the capacity of lifting cargo from our destinations. And the cargo consists of fruit and vegetables, et cetera. A lot of them are perishable, so you need to get it to the destination quickly. So I had to report to him, within my first three months of accepting this office, I had a meeting with the management of JetBlue in Grenada. And they indicated that, sorry, there is absolutely no way that they can lift cargo out of Grenada. Sometimes when they are filled, they even have to leave back baggage because of weight constraints for the aircraft. So my first question to them was, well, why don't you change the equipment? Have a bigger, wider body aircraft? And you can probably carry even more passengers and cargo with it at the same time. Well, the response was very quick. Well, if you can get the other islands to think in that direction, then maybe management of JetBlue may be able to give consideration to the situation. So this is one of my jobs right now, to liaise with the other islands where JetBlue flies and to say, let's have a joint arrangement, make a joint presentation to JetBlue and say, this is what we want in the region. Or if you wish to have a separate flight altogether, just dedicated to lifting cargo from the region. This is what we need at this point in time. So we need, we need therefore to confront in a very respectful manner these global entities, these mega organizations and companies, and let them know the needs of the region. They have their needs, we are helping them to meet their needs financially. Every time they fly full, they make a lot of profit. So we have a responsibility to interact with them and say, this is our need. And get the support of all the governments in the region where JetBlue flies to make that representation. Gone are the days where each island will fight on its own for its benefit. We have to have a collaboration taking place so we can pursue our needs as a joint body with force and with tenacity. Respectfully, but very forcefully. These are some of the things that I would like to bring forward in the communities of our diaspora, be it in New York, be it in Canada, be it in the UK or Trinidad, as the case may be. We have a serious problem in the region with respect to now air traffic, airlift. We having a serious problem of cost of air travels to go from Grenada to Barbados or to Trinidad. The cost is so high, you can almost fly to Miami for that cost. Part of the, part of the issue, it is because of high taxes implemented by governments in the region. This is a matter that Prime Minister Mitchell has recognized, and he has already advanced discussions with his colleague prime ministers in the region. I tell you, this prime minister is being respected throughout CARICOM for his bold initiatives, for his bold ideas, and he's actually saying to them, it is okay to wear two-collar side of socks, which at times he does. And some of them, they're even following him. There is something now in the, in the, in the region which is called the Mitchell dress, his style, how he dresses. So when you see this is happening, because the same thing happened to Maurice Bishop in Grenada. When he went to the other islands, people were lining up the streets to see the Maurice Bishop. This young Mitchell, not the old one, this young Mitchell, this young Mitchell is gaining the respect not only of Grenadians, but of Caribbean people throughout the region. I tell you something, about two weeks ago, he launched in his constituency what is called the Wash Program. Now, what is Wash? Water and sanitation for homes. That in itself is a, it may sound simple to a lot of you, but his administration inherited a high percentage of our population using pitla trees. 10 years ago, the World Bank recognized that this was a serious issue and a problem in Grenada. They provided assistance. I don't know where that assistance went. Some people call it shit. But we, we need to recognize that it's important to lift the sanitation level of our Grenadian people. And this is what this administration is doing, lifting the standard of living. So that program got initiated in Belleisle, and it is continuing village after village after village. It's gonna take time. Imagine, this is the first time I'm hearing the opposition is criticizing the government for not doing this, not doing that. A year and a, under a year and a half in office, you know? The other one was there 23 years, 23 years. But you want to know the other one? Well, I, I had time to answer that question. What I, what I want to say to you is that Grenada is on a new trajectory, is on a new direction. And therefore, we want to ask for your support, we want to ask for your encouragement, we want to ask for your prayers, we want to ask you to hold this administration together, support them, encourage them, pray for them, and to help Grenada get out of the morass that is presently in. While a lot has been accomplished over the past, under a year and a half, so much more needs to be done. A lot needs to be done. We are now engaging under the banner of Diaspora Affairs. My first approved initiative was adopt a school initiative. And for all of you here and others who may have assisted in the past, I say thank you very much on behalf of the government and people and students of Grenada for your assistance. But having launched that initiative, it has received so much positive buy-in that three months ago, I joined with Prime Minister in St. David's to distribute school supplies, which was a donation coming from the Bean Sisters out of Canada, somewhere in Canada, somewhere in Grenada, et cetera. And it was a very touching occasion, very moving indeed. And then only just two weeks ago, with the kind support of someone out of Texas, Michelle Thomas, she sent in a couple of barrels, and there was just so much stuff in there. Rather than giving to one school, we were able to touch the lives of students in three schools in St. Andrew. So I want to thank, I want to thank all those of you who intend to adopt a school. And it's very simple. You can do it directly, or you can make contact with the Office of Diaspora Affairs, and we put you in touch with the principal. And it does not have to be just school supplies. You can decide to assist needy students in transportation costs, or you have a scholarship fund for them, or you can decide under another program, which government has initiated, which provides almost free internet to needy students. It costs $20 EC per month under that program. And that program, in association with Flow, will provide internet services to students. Many students in need, their parents can't afford to, you know, provide internet services. In other words, the vision of this administration is to create a level of education to our students in Grenada, that within the next decade, we should be having individuals in the workplace and otherwise that are at such a high level that Grenada will once again become the gem and the capital of the region. We were there once upon a time, for those of you who are old enough to know. Students from Dominica, Antigua, St. Lucia, all over the region, came to Grenada for their education. Some of the prime ministers, the older ones in the region, schooled right here in Grenada because we were considered the number one island in the region. We are on our way to get there again. I want to therefore say how happy I was to have received the very warm welcome of all of you at the gala last night, and indeed interacting with several other Grenadians over the last two days. I only came in on Thursday night. Thanks to JetBlue, I got in close to 1 o'clock. But that's all right, I got in safe. And, um, the warmth that I... And the warmth that I feel here in New York is no different to the warmth that I feel in Grenada. So I wanna thank each and every one of you for this great warmth that you have provided. The camaraderie and the fellowship was truly engaging, and I thank you indeed from the bottom of my heart. If there is anything that I can do to ensure that your vision is materialized in Grenada, the Office of Diaspora Affairs is where you should be making your contact. And we have just two members of staff so far, and our office is not yet quite settled down, but we can give you contact information, email address, telephone numbers, if you are interested in, you know, making contact with the Office of Diaspora Affairs. So, thank you very much, and I'm open to any questions which you may have.
Thank you Ambassador of Diaspora Affairs, give him another warm welcome. We are gonna get to the questions at the end of the presentation, so just be with us. I just wanted to piggyback on one of the programs that the ambassador just mentioned, and that is the New York chapter itself. We were just involved in a school supplies program, that we send boxes and boxes of school supplies to the students of Grenada. And at this moment, immediately, we are getting ready to launch our Christmas toys program. And we are looking more so for educational toys, but of course, kids are kids, we will take all toys. Alright? So you're gonna hear more about that program going forward. We are working on the details, we are fine-tuning it, and we will share with you where you can support us, where you can drop off your toys, and so on and so forth. Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, sisters and brothers, let us get on with the program tonight. I wanna bring to the podium a gentleman who's not a stranger to New York. He has been around for a while, he's not a stranger to the party. This gentleman has been, I would say he has been like Atlas, lifting up the party, holding the party up like that for ages and ages. This gentleman has served in several capacities within the National Democratic Congress except the political leader, and I guess, and I think deputy political leader, he served as chairman, he served as general secretary, as PRO. I wanna bring to the podium our new ambassador to the People's Republic of Cuba, Brother Glenn Noel, to make a few remarks.
Thank you very much, Brother Boone. And let me say a pleasant good evening to all of you, the audience here. But first of all, let me recognize of course Ambassador Terry Forrester, Ambassador to the Diaspora, and of course the hard-working General Secretary of the NDC, Brother Larry Barry, and of course the Chairman of the New York Chapter, and all of the executive and other members. Pleasant good evening to you. Without your presence here this evening, this tongue-hall meeting would not be successful. So I wanna thank you for coming out as well. Now, I learned very early as a soldier that you always have to be prepared. Because when I left home this afternoon, I wasn't aware that I was supposed to speak. When I got the invitation to come to New York, I got an invitation which of course immensely pleased, highly honored, and yet at the same time deeply humbled to receive that award from the chapter. So I thought that my mission was to come, receive the award, and then come and sit down in the audience and listen like everybody else. But, so I wanna thank the New York Chapter for at least celebrating the party's anniversary. And I also want to thank them for organizing this activity, and of course the award ceremony. These days, I sleep and wake in Havana, Cuba. It's nice, but it's not my home. And I thank the government for the opportunity to serve one more time. I feel like a father, like a manager of a business, who has been part of a business that had its ups and downs, success and failure, highs and lows. And it was necessary to make a transformation as it relates to bringing in new blood, nurturing new leadership, to ensure that the company survives. And so, my role as the chairperson of the Leadership Search Committee, you'll remember that NDC as a party had two back-to-back defeats, fifteen-nil, blackwash, whitwash, graywash, whatever you want to call it. And the reality, the reality was that although the party had a base, because we still got over forty percent of the electorate, the then winning side got over fifty-eight percent. And that happened within fifteen years, three elections, different election. So NDC became stagnant, and the people get fed up with the same old and the same old. There was a generational fatigue within the leadership of the NDC. And the NDC couldn't face the electorate in the same old way, with the same people and the same vibes. We needed new energy, fresh blood, and the NDC had to be reflective and introspective, and had to realize that you must make those dynamic changes. And this will happen to all of us, and that's why I use the analogy as a businessman. Because some of us who are elders, parents, we have to lay the right future and nurture our children so that they can inherit and ensure that there is continuity. And so the vision, and I wanna thank the New York Chapter and Brother Boone for the role that they play too. It took courage to admit where you are weak, and it took courage to open up a process to bring in new blood, persons that you did not know very well. You have to trust in the young generation. The future belongs to them. We are just here, and we must ensure that when we leave, we leave something better for them. And don't be afraid, don't be scared, right? If we do the right things, they will take us through. And so, we invested, we invested in a process that was inclusive, and we made the young people felt at home. And therefore, our Prime Minister, the Honorable Dick Mitchell, came in, we encouraged him, and we saw in him vision, we saw in him leadership qualities, we saw in him humility, we saw in him boldness, we saw all the traits of leadership, but we saw the humanity in him and his team. And those of us who are older, we decided that this was the right time to bring in fresh blood, and for some of us to take a back seat. And so, when I hear Brother Terry and our Minister of MIT, Andy Mitchell, talk about, Andy Williams, sorry. When I hear them express the quality, the quality that our Prime Minister is exercising, then I see we were right and we make the right decision. Now, if I'm selfish, I would say what is happening on the opposite side must continue to happen, and NDC must flourish. But I'll tell you, I'll tell you deeply, right? The same way I remember having a conversation with a former Prime Minister, and at one time, as you know, a lot of the other guys who was in NDC went over, and they used to say to me, Glenn, boy, why you wasting your time beating up with this old party for? Come and join and everything like that. And I said to them, Grenada needs a strong NDC that is vibrant, that could be a good opposition and a good alternative. And our opposite forces need to recognize too, that in order for them to be relevant, they have to make the necessary transformation and transition, right? And bring in fresh blood and leadership, right? In order to be competitive. And you may say, well, we shouldn't be concerned about that, we should just concern about we get the opportunity now to lead for the next ten and fifteen years. And that is true, but I would also like to see a good, strong opposition and good competitive politics in Grenada, because that is good for all of us. That is good for all of us. And so, I am happy with the progress that the government is making so far. They are not perfect, they are human, it's a young group of persons, but for a young group of persons, they have landed on their feet and keep running. And I wanted to give them a round of applause. The vision that they have for Grenada and the pillars that they have identified are very strong. Education and training, and in fact, you have heard about the investment in ensuring accessibility to secondary and tertiary education. That is important, because many of us here, you know, is access to education that helped liberate all of us and give us an education and wealth and development. So that is very good for the country generally. And they recognize that you need to build a gap between academic education and investment in skills, and they're doing that in Grenada as well, and that is extremely important. And in fact, I want to say that we have a role to play too. Developed countries like America, New York have always played a role in the development of the country. People come, they acquire skills when they come here, they get exposure, they get jobs, they develop capital, and so they can invest, they can come back, they can train, they can teach, they can nurture, they can mentor. And it's up to Grenada now to create a path, to give you the encouragement and the incentives that you will feel comfortable to invest in your homeland. Because let me tell you something, and you know that already, it is getting more and more difficult to live in this part of the world as Caribbean people, right? And I was so proud to hear this young lady talk about her heritage, the fact that she's Grenadian, of Grenadian parentage, and she value what is unique about us. And so the link between training your children, taking them back home for vacation, teaching them about their roots, so that you won't have a big house in Grenada, and then there's no one to live in it. And you won't have lands that is just wasted and nobody to go back and take care of it, because you give them that root, that they understand who they are and where they're from, and so. So that is extremely important. The other important point that I want to make, the issue of the healthcare, I think is extremely important. We, the government, recognize the importance of starting with primary healthcare, because you can't put all the pressure on the main institution, which is the hospital. Everybody little caught, a little sew, every emergency getting there, right? So you need to ensure in the communities, in the villages, there are good healthcare facility that will take care of those basic things, and you invest in training and the prevention aspect about identifying diseases and deal with it as a very early age. And so the investment in training and having more nurses, more doctors, and to specialize in various fields is extremely important. Why sit in Cuba, interact every day, in fact, at the moment, we have about three or four patients from Grenada in Cuba, doing this, some come for hip replacement, some come, in fact, I have a guy there now that is stage four cancer, very advanced, very, very, very serious, and we're trying to see the best that we can do. But a lot of the cases is that we identify those problems when it's too late. So the prevention aspect, the primary healthcare, is extremely important. And of course, investment in education, nutritional training and everything. Then the issue of food security, which the government is investing in again, is extremely important, because you have to be able to ensure not just that you have sufficient food to feed yourself, but nutritious food too, and to ensure that you could enjoy good health, and to cut back your export bill, your import bill. Because we spend millions of dollars with things that we can grow in Grenada and we can make in Grenada. And so the whole question of investment, and, you know, we keep thinking and talking about foreign investors, right? The person who buys a bus in Grenada is an investor. He invests a hundred thousand, sometimes a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy a bus. The person who buy a fishing boat is an investor, a small business person, right? The person who opens a private school is an investor. And I'm saying to you too, we have to get rid of the old habit where we think you need to work and we save some money in the bank, sometime you die before you reach sixty years, before you reach seventy, you never had an opportunity to use that money, you go nowhere. We have to make that money make money for us, so there is an income coming in. And there is an opportunity to find out where you can invest in Grenada, what you can do to spend some money, to get back some money, and at the same time to help to create jobs and so. And that is the mentality, that is the attitude we want to see, that is what we want to create. Grenada is a fine place. In this world where crime is becoming increasingly a major problem, we still have tranquility, we still have peace, we still, Grenada is still unspoilt in so many ways. You can still leave your car at least open, I mean, everywhere you have a little murder every now and then, and I'm not saying that nothing is happening in Grenada. But I'm saying when you compare the rest of the world, Grenada is safe, and we must sell that, and we must market that, we must let people know about Grenada. And we have to address, as Terry said, the issue of the transport and airlift, because that is part of the problem we face in Cuba as well, in terms of being able to trade there. I'm talking to business people over there, and trying to see how we could get some level of cooperation as it relates to getting our spices exported in this part of the world. And of course, to be able to get people from Grenada to go up there, because one of the things I observe about Cuba, they learn to preserve the history very well, you know? Historical landmarks and development, the history, be able to preserve that, and there is a lot we can learn from that. And it's important that we do that in Grenada. But I know the greater part of this evening is for you to ask questions. I tend to speak a little bit long, and please forgive me, so I will wind up at this moment by thanking you for turning out, and thanking the organizers, and seeing it's a great pleasure to be here.
Thank you very much Ambassador Glenn Noel. Could you please give him another warm applause? Sisters and brothers, we are about to get to the other speaker, but before we do that, I want to suggest to all of our folks who are standing at the back, we have lots of empty seats in front. We're gonna take a small pause to get to the comments, sit down. It is a, it is a kind of hazard against the rules of the building here, that we want, we don't want people standing in the doorway and so on. Please find a seat. Alright, please help us to find, there are a lot of seats in front here, we have about twelve seats right here, we have some in the middle right there. So please, colleagues, find a seat so that we can move on with the program, and that you will get your chance in a few moments to ask your questions and raise your concerns. So thank you for cooperating. So ladies and gentlemen, the next person I wanna bring to, a man of energy and talent. Alright, this is a dynamic young man, full of energy, full of zest, and he's bright, in my opinion. in my opinion. This gentleman is the newest General Secretary of the NDC. And I tell you one thing about this man, he may not tell you tonight, but I have never seen a man who would work maybe from eight o'clock in the morning to four o'clock the next morning and he's not tired. I don't know what is going on with this man. Those of us who live here and you look at television, you remember the advertisement of the energy burner, the every, what is it? Energizer burner? He reminds me of that. I don't know. He is, but the point I'm making is that this gentleman is always alert, he's sharp. And I want to bring to the mic our newest General Secretary of the NDC. He has an important role to play tonight. He's going to share with you some of the achievements of the government since taking power. In fact, based on the manifesto and the promises we made in the manifesto, he is going to share with you what has the party done and the government has done. And after that, we would take a break. When I say take a break, I mean you take a break from the stage. And then we will allow you to come here and this, make a line here so that you could come to the mic and ask your questions and raise your concerns. And when we get to that point, we'll tell you what is, what are the rules. So at this juncture, let us bring to the mic our new General Secretary Brother Larry Barry.
Thank you very much, Comrade Chair, Brother Bone. We have become very close friends and I like the energy of Brother Bone as well. Special evening to everyone. I'm happy to see so many of my family here. You know, I have, I have aunts and yes, I have in-laws, I have cousins, I have uncles. It's really nice. And then of course, I see a special sister and a special brother from the town here. I see Sister Tiola who said, I know the energy he has, I know it for a long time. So pleasant evening to everyone, really happy to see all of you here. It's a pleasure on behalf of the Prime Minister, on behalf of the political leader, on behalf of the Chairman of the Party, Comrade Sylvester Qualles. We're really delighted to be part of the 36th Anniversary celebrations that this chapter is hosting for the party rally because the rest of the party is not having its celebration of its 36 as you are having here. So you are always the vanguard branch, you are always the standard bearer. The New York chapter is as old as the NDC and it is the standard bearer for the National Democratic Congress. The first gala, Prime Minister's Gala, since becoming the government in 2022 was hosted by the New York chapter. And every, every other chapter to date has followed in your footsteps. We, well, 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 we prefer to say, we prefer to say, New York lead, the rest follow. So Canada had a very successful gala. On Friday, we go down to Florida for their first PM's Gala. Then on the 4th of November, the UK is hosting their first PM's Gala, thanks to the lead of the New York chapter, the vanguard chapter. So thank you, New York, members of your executive. Thank you, Minister Andy Williams, in your absence. Andy and I was part of the development of that new ministry. Thank you very much, Brother Ambassador, the Asper of Years. Thank you very much, Comrade, former General Secretary, former Chairman of the Party, former Atlas of the NDC. He has held up this party. In fact, there was an occasion when we had four major resignations after the loss in 2018. The Chairman of the Party resigned, the Deputy Chair of the Party resigned, the P R of the Party resigned. And this brother never resigned. He kept the party literally on his shoulders. That's why the award he got last night was so fitting, was so fitting. And Brother Glenn comes from a long tradition, folks, a long tradition of standard bearers for this party. One of the standard bearers of this party and a founder of this party is former Prime Minister Tillman Thomas. And we know there is something in a name. Are there any Thomases in here? Anybody with a name Thomas? First name, last name, middle name? Wow. We have about 150 people here, it looks like. We do not have another Thomas in middle name, first name or last name? Well, I saw people's reaction when the Ambassador to Cuba, former General Secretary, said, "Andy Mitchell." And the question is, what's in a name? Well, in the National Democratic Congress, there's a lot in a name. And the name Thomas is a name you must never forget. It is the most significant name in the history of the NDC. We were formed in 1987. We went to the first general election in 1990. That general election, we had the first significant Thomas to help the NDC. Mr. Edsel Thomas, who won the seat in St. John's in 1990, came over to the NDC because we won seven seats, seven seats in our first general elections. We won more seats in that election in 1990. But in a 15-seat parliament, you need eight to govern. Edsel Thomas left the GOP to help the NDC form the government in 1990. Fast forward, fast forward. In 2022, in 2022, Delma Thomas. And the significance of the name Thomas, not finished yet. Do you know, do you know that suffering two 15-0 losses is a major challenge? So that in the first loss in 1999, 15-0, Tillman Thomas became the political leader and the first Thomas to become Prime Minister. Do you know, do you know that today, the current Prime Minister is also a Thomas? Yes. One of his two middle names is Thomas. The name Thomas and his father, Peter Thomas, that was the father name, but his middle name is Thomas. So it's Deacon Amish Thomas Mitchell. The significance of a name and the importance of the name Thomas to the NDC must stay with you forever. So whenever a Thomas comes over, we applaud. On this note, on this note, I want to give you a recap of our performance to date, starting with our manifesto commitments is going to run in the video. Take your minds and your hearts and your eyes to the screen. You have 20 minutes and after that, we go right into questions. And after that, if you want any other information, we're loaded with information for you this evening. So over to the technical people, run the video. Our 16 highlights.
I, Deacon Amish Thomas Mitchell, do swear that I will bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, her heirs and successors according to law. So help me God. I, Deacon Amish Thomas Mitchell, do swear that I will faithfully execute the office of Prime Minister without fear or favor, affection or ill will, and that in the execution of the functions of that office, I will honor, uphold, and preserve the Constitution of Grenada. So help me God. I am pleased to report that our new administration has been able to lay some key cornerstones for this future that we collectively wish to see. Payment of dock salaries to teachers and other public officers. Teachers play a critical role in the development of a knowledgeable and prosperous society and often go above and beyond the call of duty to ensure the well-being of the nation's children. While this was not a campaign promise, my government made it a priority to repay the 1.2 million dollars in dock salaries from 2018 that affected 1,721 public servants. Because if we seek to create a just society, we must lead by example. The mandate is not just to get things done. The mandate is to get them done better, faster, and cheaper. So let me repeat, the mandate is to get them done better, faster, and cheaper. Because if we just get them done, we will not transform Grenada. And so the transformation process must lead to an overall improvement in the lives of all our people. And that ultimately is the goal of the Ministry of Mobilization, Implementation, and Transformation. And so while we've established this ministry, transformation will not take place if all of Grenada is not part of the transformation process. And therefore, I want to use this opportunity to continue to encourage all citizens of Grenada in their own way to be part of the transformation process that needs to happen. And I will end by saying to demonstrate that we will do things differently.
We are talking here fundamentally about the well-being of our citizens. If people work for 30, 40 years to build the state of Grenada and we let them retire into poverty, it is the state of Grenada that we are doing a service. It is the citizens of Grenada that we are doing a disservice. We cannot pretend, there are a number of difficult decisions we may have to make going forward to ensure that all of us in the wider community are able to get a pension, as little as it may be, going forward and that we do not end up in a situation where people retire into poverty because no plans are put in place for ensuring or guaranteeing that pensions are available to them.
Government will honor the Constitution and the ruling of the High Court on the payment of pensions to the public servants. Plans to this end are well underway. The House of Representatives sat 29 September 2020 and passed the supplementary appropriation bill 2022 to facilitate, in part, the authorization of the $60 million required to pay the retroactive pension payment, which will be paid by November 30th, 2022. Mr. Speaker, transformation is the word that best describes, that best embodies the vision that this administration holds for Grenada. For too long, services and infrastructure critical in supporting our citizens to fulfill their potential as individuals and attain a high quality of life were ignored. Such was the, such was the disrepair in our society that our team understood moving Grenada forward would require an immense wave of change, a revolution in our manner of thinking and our approach to sustainable development as a nation. In a world that is becoming more technological by the day, our school system is still geared towards a 20th century worldview. As a small island developing state with large ocean space that is vulnerable to the effects of climate change and overly reliant on the importation of food, our children are still socialized to believe that employment in agriculture and the marine industries is somehow not desirable or economically viable. Our education and training models too are not tailored to suit our unique reality, the needs of our consumption patterns, nor our business sector. Mr. Speaker, our human resources are our most precious asset and a fundamental contributor to the social and economic development of our nation. Mr. Speaker, all of the above has not yet touched on the most critical aspect of our transformation agenda, which is addressing the total disregard for healthcare systems. For too long, Grenadians have had to make do with an inept system that has undervalued its healthcare professionals and underfunded critical health services to the detriment of many. Mr. Speaker, access to affordable healthcare is a basic right that this administration intends to deliver to the people of Grenada, Caribou, and PT Martin. Mr. Speaker, we have made a commitment to construct a new, modern public hospital with teaching facilities as the centerpiece to the development of the education, health, and wellness sector. The economic and health benefits from such a project have never been in doubt, Mr. Speaker. Preliminary studies have already confirmed the potential significant impact on our economy. To demonstrate our commitment in this regard, we will launch this project next year and complete the necessary preliminaries to commence the project. The amount of $5 million has been budgeted for phase one of the new hospital project next year. Additionally, we will upgrade our health facilities across the trial and state and introduce systems, including primary healthcare teams, to strengthen primary healthcare access and delivery. Alongside health and wellness, transforming our approach to education and training to ensure the delivery of high quality and relevant learning and skills to our population, especially our youth, is crucial if we are to transform Grenada. Of paramount importance, Mr. Speaker, is the need, is the need to pivot this sector towards this new trust and position our citizens to be at the vanguard of this 21st century revolution. Therefore, Mr. Speaker, we need to address the skills gap. A fundamental issue that we must confront is the gap that exists between the curriculum taught in schools and the skills required for the job market and Grenada's development. Mr. Speaker, this administration intends to raise the profile of the T A Marisho Community College to the highest echelons of Caribbean education, providing a high-quality technological and vocational hub that will prepare our students for the jobs that are available throughout this region. To this end, we intend to partner with the World Bank for the provision of a highly concessional loan of US $15 million. These funds will be used to strategically strengthen capacity at TAMCC and develop high-quality academic programs tailored to Caribbean reality, which will ultimately contribute to research and innovation that support local development. An amount of half a million, Mr. Speaker, has been allocated for the commencement of the O E C S Regional Skills and Innovation Project next year. Specifically, the vision for TAMCC will be achieved through the following initiatives. One, institutional strengthening. Two, promoting regional networks and centers of academic excellence. Three, supporting high-quality student services. Four, improving laboratories and workshops. Five, developing digital skills and digital infrastructure for students and teachers. Six, implementing information systems to monitor students' skills proficiency. to monitor students' skills proficiency, academic progression, and labour market outcomes. Mr. Speaker, capacity will also be strengthened at the New Life Organisation, NLO, the National Training Agency, the NTA, the Small Business Development Unit, and other agencies to deliver the skills that are needed to transform our economy and to create opportunities for employment both locally and abroad. This trust, Mr. Speaker, will also include training our teachers and educators so that they can possess the right skill sets to deliver quality education training. Additionally, Mr. Speaker, provisions have been made to train our youth in coding, a critical skill in many future jobs. An allocation of 1 million dollars has been allocated in the 2023 budget for this, Mr. Speaker. When the international price of oil increases, the price of fuel on the domestic market increases, as well as the price of food. Mr. Speaker, while we have no control over the international price of oil, we have taken decisive and deliberate actions to reduce the impact on our citizens while being fiscally responsible. Mr. Speaker, we removed the petrol tax effective September 18, 2022 for a period of four months in the first instance. This led to a dramatic reduction in prices at the pump and even resulted in Grenada having the lowest prices in the OCS region. We extended the removal of VAT and the Environmental Levy, or EVL, which expired in June for the rest of 2022. To help reduce the cost of food, Mr. Speaker, we instituted a cap on freight effective as of October 1, 2022 for a period of six months. Mr. Speaker, as a government, we will do what is necessary for as long as it is necessary to shield our citizens from the devastating impact of high prices, especially on food, fuel, and other necessities. Therefore, Mr. Speaker, in 2023, the following additional cost of living and other relief measures will be rolled out. Mr. Speaker, we will exempt VAT on the following food items and other necessities effective February 2023 until December 2023. These items include: one, soya chunks; two, veggie patties; three, olive oil; four, canola oil; five, soybean oil; six, sunflower oil; seven, coconut oil; eight, red kidney beans; nine, black eye peas; ten, lentil peas; eleven, hand sanitizers; twelve, adult diapers; thirteen, baby diapers; fourteen, toothpaste; fifteen, toilet paper; sixteen, bathing soap; seventeen, laundry soap; eighteen, sanitary napkins; and nineteen, condoms. And in event you want to know why condoms make the list, the Minister of Health and the Ministry of Health has noted, Mr. Speaker, an increase in STDs within Grenada. And we seem to have taken it for granted that HIV is no more, but it is still. And therefore, we need to ensure, particularly that our young persons are given the opportunity, Mr. Speaker, to practise safe sexual and reproductive practices. Mr. Speaker, the full list of VAT-exempt items is attached as an appendix to the public version of this statement. The exemption of VAT on these items is also aligned, Mr. Speaker, with government's policy to support healthy eating and lifestyles. I turn, Mr. Speaker, to more effective government. Mr. Speaker, in a country portfolio performance review conducted last month in November by the World Bank, it was pointed out that of the 10 investment projects that the World Bank has with Grenada, totaling 99 million US dollars, roughly almost 267 million EC dollars, all of them are significantly delayed, with only two of the 10 projects having disbursements this year, and with two of the 10 projects being described as problem status, meaning that there is a risk that we may lose the funds for these projects. Moreover, Mr. Speaker, the review flagged that in the last few years, annual disbursements of investment operations averaged only 4 million, notwithstanding that we had an envelope of 99 million, a drop in the bucket. Additionally, projects funded through the Caribbean Development Bank are similarly delayed. The reality, Mr. Speaker, is that the implementation rate of externally funded projects is dismally poor. The cost to hold these funds on Grenada's behalf, known as commitment fees, run into the millions of dollars. The Molina landslide rehabilitation. Mr. Speaker, the rehabilitation of this segment of the Western Main Road Corridor is long overdue. And had it not been for the hard work and determination of our team in resolving the land issues, the start of construction could have been further delayed.
Give you a nice overview of what we've been able to achieve. And we have been able to achieve them against the very 16 commitments that we have made or campaign manifesto commitments in summary there. And you can always find it on our website, ndcgrenada.org. We've made significant progress with at least six of the 16 already within the last 15 months. A record achievement if you measure manifesto commitments and achievements. Pause, pause, thank you, thank you. So that's it. We ready for questions? We have any other area that you might have interest in? We can always tell you which part of the video we can give you detailed information on. So this is it for us for now. Over to you with your questions and comments. We're making a little turnaround with the mics while you put your questions and comments together. Both for the minister. So I will take any questions that will want that persons have for the minister, as well as you have the two ambassadors here and any other from the presentation so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Brother General Secretary Larry Barry. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to make a slight adjustment. We're going to put the mic in the middle here so that we also want you to get yourself in a line so you can ask your questions. But I have two announcements to make as we get prepared for that. Activities like this one here, colleagues, friends, requires some investment on the part of a chapter. But a chapter is not a business. We are not a profit-making business. We try to raise funds to help our party in elections and to help the party carry out its daily operations. So also, we are not fortunate to collect briefcases of money and so on. So we have our members who are going to pass around with two baskets. Please give generously. Give your best, alright? And we are grateful. And we thank you in advance, those of you who already give and who I know that a lot of you are thinking of giving. We want to thank you generously for your gift. Second, my second announcement is that someone has already jumped the line and donated some money to us, but we haven't collected it yet. So check your pocket. Somebody has dropped a few dollars somewhere along in this room. If you know that you dropped some money, alright, go to the table at the back there and the person who found your money may ask you if you want to donate it to us. Alright, we will be grateful to receive it. Well, yeah, the person who has the money is right in the corner here. So you could go to this gentleman right here on the front table, alright? And you can claim your winnings. But I would urge you, I would urge you, that sum of money you dropped, the NDC New York chapter would gladly receive it. Thank you very much. So let's make some small adjustments here. So ladies and gentlemen, sisters and brothers, at this point, those of you who have questions and comments, please begin to form a line in this row here, in the centre of the aisle. We want to suggest that a simple rule, one question per person or one comment. We do not want you to make too much of long speeches. There are a lot of people here who may want to make some comments and ask some questions. So we want to give as much people an opportunity to ask some questions and to raise your concerns. So at this juncture, I want to invite our family and friends right here in the New York chapter, all our visitors, to come to the mic and start asking your questions. Thank you. Yeah, I think we have more room on this side here. So ladies and gentlemen, please, I mean, are you telling us that the presentation was so good that nobody has any more questions? Alright, but I know you have some questions. Let's just get the ball rolling. Thank you.
Hello. So I see that there's a lot of investment being put into education and training for young people. But I want to know, is there also an investment in the industry? Because oftentimes what happens is that you educate young people, you give them all this training, but then there's no jobs for them to go to, which also adds to the brain drain that I know a lot of the Caribbean has to experience. And I think being able to keep people within the country is very important. So I want to know if there is anything intentionally being done to make sure that people stay and that people get the jobs and the opportunities that will allow them to live comfortably. So, yeah.
We'll take a couple and then we answer them in turn.
Sure.
So I just wanted to say that the last time when the New Jewel Movement was in power, I heard Maurice Bishop gave a lot, there was a lot of economic things happening in Jamaica. Sorry, in Grenada. So I just wanted to know how the current parties in Grenada feel about the improvements that the New Jewel Movement made and if there's any party that's trying to work on that. Because, you know, we are all in the Caribbean. We all underdevelop, trying to develop. We want to create jobs. You talk about industry and stuff like that. So I want to know if there's any party that's building on anything that the New Jewel Movement did or if any party thinks that the New Jewel Movement took Grenada backwards. And just a slight comment, I didn't even, you know, when I saw your Prime Minister being sworn in, I was surprised that he was saying he's pledging allegiance to the Queen of England. So I'm wondering, when is Grenada gonna... Are Grenada satisfied with being subjects of the Queen? That's just my comment.
Alright, so I think we could answer those questions in the meantime. In the meantime, alright, we have one more, Hercules. Oh, you coming here?
Let's take one more.
Good evening. I thought the mic wasn't working, you know? Yeah, my question... Current, oh, I just said current goal. Yeah, my question is this. You know, just as how a lot of us Grenadians, we come to America, England, Canada, and we get really professional in whatever we do. Now, we in America, we in England, we in Canada, and we build in America. We build in Canada, we build in England. I want to know if there is a programme whereby we, the government, or any government, could take Grenadians from England, America, and Canada and bring them back to Grenada and help develop the country like how we are developing America?
Great, great. Thank you very much for the questions. So I'll give you a quick response to the four we have so far. We have one carried over from the lady who asked about the roads to open up access to farmlands. That was for the minister. So he had alerted me to respond to it. We have a question on investment in industry. Where is it? We have a question on economic activities and the improvements that the NGM made and whether any other party or the NDC is building on it. And then we have the question of when are we going to move away from or as subjects of the Queen? And whether that speaks to the question of republicanism. And then we just had a final one from Hercules about Grenadians who have migrated, developed skills, have those skills now that they could come back and help the country and what or how are we going to capitalise on their skills to help build? So I'm going to leave the last one to the two ambassadors. I'm going to respond to the first four and of course, the two ambassadors can highlight any aspect of my responses. So the good lady who, they'll ask about to the minister the question of, what are we doing about expanding access to roads so that we can increase access to rural farmlands? You know, that's an excellent question. We have a great record of opening up access to lands. access to lands. One of the founders, founders of the party, George Brison, many of you know the name. He had the largest rural farm road development program after the revolution. The largest access to farm road under the ACP African Caribbean and Pacific Program. We have a history in the NDC of having the greatest investment in agriculture infrastructure. Of course, it was thanks to the NDC that we had introduced Baron Foods. It was thanks to the NDC, many of you who drink Juve Chocolate. That is one of the best 100% organic cocoa powder tea you can drink, of high quality. Whenever you come to Grenada, make sure you carry back some Juve Chocolate, whatever you. It was the NDC under Tillman Thomas that opened up hundreds of feet of concrete roads and sent mark when the first farmer cooperative was established under the Grenada Cocoa Association for the establishment of Juve. And that was an investment, the first investment that was made in the Juve plant was $200,000 by former Prime Minister Tillman Thomas. So twinning it with the question someone asked about industry, we have taken the decision on industry when compared to the decisions of the previous administration. So under the National Democratic Congress, we have established a cannabis investment program, and we are going to be providing access roads to open up the cannabis industry. There is a proposal right now that the Prime Minister has reviewed from a group of Rastafarians, and that is going to be part of the cannabis, the cannabis industry development program. Yes. The Prime Minister launched a spice replanting program. Because Grenada used to be among the top producers of spices. We are now number eight or nine globally. And part of the reason for our drop is because one government prioritize offshore financial services and tourism. That prioritization occurred between 20, between 1995 and 2022, when they lost the elections. So if you look at 1995 to 2022, that's 23 years. The NDC served for four and a half years in that, in fact, 27 years, between 1995 and 2022, it's 27 years. The NDC served four and a half years between 2008 and 2013. So until 2022, June 23rd, 2022, when the NDC returned, the National, the New National Party spent 23 years of the last 27 years in office. Out of that 23 years, the New National Party had no opposition for 15 years. They had all 15 seats for 15 years. Until in one instance, one person crossed the floor, that was Michael Batiste, towards the tail end of that 15 years. They had 13 years of uninterrupted rule, 1995 to 2008. 13 years, and the priority was offshore financial services, tourism. The NDC came in in 2008 and immediately shifted priority to agricultural investments. We opened up hundreds of feet of concrete roads to increase access to rural farmlands, so we can increase agricultural production. That is when Juve Chocolate and Baron Foods and so on, in terms of manufacturing, came into being. When the NNP returned in 2013, for another nine years, uninterrupted rule, they moved immediately away from agriculture and went back to financial services and tourism. And a massive emphasis in their tourism thrust was building hotels rather than increasing services. So in building hotels, we ended up with immediate investment crisis, the biggest, Kauanabe. Kauanabe has cost us, for this current government, to settle the investment dispute between the NNP and the investor. We've just buy out the conflict for over $20 million. Because if we went to ICSE, the International Center for the Settlement of Investment Disputes, which is where the investor took the government to court, the NNP government, had we gone to the court, that court, it would have cost us potentially hundreds of millions in legal fees and settlement costs. And I can give you a comparison as to why we chose not to do that. The same thing happened when the investor that owned the majority shares in Grenlech took the NNP government to the same ICSE, that same international court. When the investor took the NNP government to court for the government's attempt to take over the shares without following the rules and the contract for the shares, they took us to court, meaning the NNP government. What was the cost of that settlement? The government paid the investor over $70 million for shares that cost $11 million in 1994. The shares cost $11 million in 1994. We paid over $70 million to buy back the shares. Because we went to the court. And there was a potential for us to settle for about $40 million if the government was negotiating with the investor then. So we did not want to saddle the country with that level of debt by buying out the shares. That, not the shares, but to have to pay to settle the Kauanabe dispute. And that is part of the decision-making process that you have to pay attention to. One government focuses on offshore financing and tourism, the other focuses on investment, agriculture, increasing access to roads to open up farmlands. So we have an agriculture development program now that is going to increase access to farmlands. And we're going to do so as part of all, in fact, there are several projects that is already in train under the new minister, who was here yesterday, where there's the Minister for Agriculture. So that is the response to the goodly lady at the back there who asks about, what are we doing to increase access? In fact, under the Spice Replanting Program, I want to just make the announcement, under the National Spice Replanting Program, you did mention persons who have idle lands? We, no, we're not taking it. The, the, we have the opportunity for you to add your private land into this National Spice Replanting Program Land Bank. And you can engage the government in a program for utilization of that land for the Spice Program, the National Spice Replanting Program. So that's an option as well. And for us to have access to those lands, we're going to open the roads to them. So you have that option as well. The investment in industry, where is it? Very important question. We continue, in fact, we'll be expanding the investment in fish exports. One of the most critical requirement for that to happen is capacity at the airport. And there's a multimillion dollar investment happening right now at the MBIA. That is going to increase capacity for storage and meet all the international standards for export. Once you have the facilities at your point of departure, which is the airport. So that's kind of part of the investment we're making. We're making significant investments in the blue economy. There's a lot we can share with you on that. I do have some things that I can bring up here, but in the interest of having the questions move on, we are making significant investment decisions currently in some critical areas. The blue economy, in terms of the creative, creative industries. I don't know how much of you would have viewed the first significant conference on the creative economy called Unleash? Anyone was able to look at? Unleash, yes, great. That's a significant step in that direction. We have since opened the office, and this is some important information in terms of the investment we're making, multimillion dollar investments in industry. Let me just spend a moment on the creative industry. We have opened the Office of Creative Affairs. That office is now provided for the first time in the history of Grenada, including during the period of the revolution. 100% duty-free for all creatives in Grenada who are investing in music, studio production, art, putting, printing, laminations, any area of the creative sector that would work, just name it, sculpturing, craft, any equipment, whatever requirement for the creative sector that you are involved in. If you're in the performing arts, if you're in the visual arts, if you, whatever aspect that you're in, 100% duty-free concession on all aspects of your imports to expand the sector. That's the kind of investment we're making in that particular sector. We're making investments in the blue economy. The blue economy has significant investment opportunity for us, income opportunity for us. You heard the minister earlier spoke about what we are doing with the cleaning up. Because you have to clean up the shores, clean up the seas, so that we can have the flourishing of our flora and fauna and our marine life. We are making some significant investment there. I know for some people, like Howard, it's moving too slow because we do not have enough jetty facilities, we do not have enough port options, we do not have enough marinas for dry dock services and so on. So we have to make investments, and we're making some investments along the western front, the western coast, so we can move a lot of the boats to those areas so that they can do their repairs and so on, while we continue to invest in our marine spaces and increase dive opportunities and so on. So those investments are going to be multimillion dollar investments. We started making some of them, and that's how we put in those investments in to increase the capacity for us to earn and grow the economy. Someone asked about economic activities and improvements that the NGM made, and what are we doing about it? Because of the decisions, and you have to understand policies matter. When government investment policy decisions are offshore, hotel, and you leave out the creative sector that I've just mentioned, we are making efforts to increase our investments in, and you leave out the marine economy, and you leave out, or the blue economy, and you leave out agriculture. What you have is the rolling back on the progress made under the NGM. What is some of the rolling back we have experienced? Unfortunately, we have experienced the collapse of MNIB. Marketing Board was running the government a debt of $2 million per month. Marketing Board was running the government a debt of $2 million per month. So this government, upon taking office on the 23rd of June 2022, reviewed and recognized it was not sustainable to find $2 million a month to cover the MNIB, the Marketing Board debt, and took the decision to temporarily close the Marketing Board for reorganization. Do you know? Because of our, in fact, the $2 million debt included debt to farmers. So farmers were selling to the Marketing Board, and the Marketing Board was not paying them for their produce, or paying them half, or not paying them on time. So we took the decision to revamp. Do you know, during the period of the revamp, because we're going to make an announcement in December, during the period, this current period of reorganization, because of the efficiencies in the reorganization, we have started back receiving produce from farmers, and we have paid farmers on time for every product that they've sold to the Marketing Board within the last couple of months. We literally meet in our commitments to farmers because we still buy through Marketing Board and supply some overseas market and some local markets as well. And we are paying them on time and at premium cost. Even before we formally reestablish the MNIB, we already seen the benefits of the reorganization that we initiated. So we have seen the rolling back of some of the progress and the gains made by the revolution, but we are investing in those aspects. Another gain of the revolution, NIS. We've had significant challenges with the NIS. And in the last report from the NIS, they indicated that they had investments in fixed deposits. And they were breaking fixed deposits to meet their monthly benefits requirement to members. Therefore, to protect the NIS, some decisions have to be made, some of which is going to affect the young lady who spoke earlier, and some of your children, and some of you here. We have made a decision, a request that the NIS made to the previous government for more than a decade, and the previous government, for political reasons, chose not to proceed with the recommendation. The actuarial recommendations, you know, actuaries are the ones who do all the assessment of the viability of these social security programs all over the world. You have a lot of social security programs in the US, so you have actuarians, actuaries, who are responsible for doing the assessments of the viability of your social security programs. In the case of Grenada, for more than a decade, the actuarial advice for the NIS is to increase the age of retirement and increase the contributions so that when persons for sustainability purposes, when the next generation of retirees retire, they will have some retirement benefits to receive. Feeling that, we would have had a crisis in the social security sector, specific to NIS. So this government took the decision, as was the advice for more than a decade that the previous government refused, probably for political reasons, or probably for fear, that we are going to incrementally increase the age of retirement to 65, commencing in 2024 to 61, and incrementally over the next seven years to 65. And the contributions have increased to 6% for the employer, 5% for the employee. You can also, under the self-employment scheme, you can make your contributions there. But that is also going to lead to an increase in benefits. And we're going to standardize three months unemployment benefits. So there's going to be a three-month unemployment benefit for all persons, including self-employed persons, so that if you're unemployed for a period of three months, you will enjoy some income for the period of three months while you're unemployed. And there are going to be other benefits that is going to go with those changes in the national insurance scheme. The expectation on the national insurance scheme, the minister spoke to it earlier, is that we're going to also introduce a national health insurance, which will have a contribution element to it, so that we can expand healthcare coverage and bring the cost down to Poland, to Poland, to a national health insurance. So I can go on with some of the other revolutionary benefits that we are building on. But we are building on all, including those that roll back or faded because of the 23 of the last 27 years rule of the NNP. Why we are going, why we are not moving away from the Queen? Well, you know, we are celebrating 50 years of independence in 2024. And under the leadership of the Honorable Deacon Mitchell, we are going to be returning to the public through consultations about the direction that the country wants to go. And the likelihood, from the sentiment we have picked up, is that the Grenadian people are ready for republicanism, and we are expecting, we are expecting- we are expecting that by our diamond jubilee, this is our golden jubilee now, fifty, by our diamond jubilee at sixty, we're going to return here and you all will be celebrating that we are no longer answering to the King. Thank you very much and over to the two ambassadors to handle a question on, uh, how are we going to incorporate the skills and talents of the Grenadians in the diaspora to help build our country? Starting with the ambassador for diaspora affairs.
Thank you, thank you, General Secretary. Skills training is one of the main pillars of this administration, highly recognized as an important aspect of development in Grenada. Most of you would know that Grenada has suffered over the years of inadequate skilled personnel. And that was highlighted only just a few years ago when the Silver Sands Hotel was being built. They had to import professional tailors, high-quality, high-end carpenters, plumbers, electricians, you name it. In addition to which, the marine industry also suffers from inadequate skilled trained individuals. To rewire a simple motor in a boat at any of our marinas, it has to be sent to Trinidad. Well, don't even talk about the dialysis clinic. To service a machine in Grenada requires someone from Miami or Trinidad or elsewhere. To service the elevator in the hospital requires someone from Cuba or the United States or elsewhere. So in other words, over the past twenty-three years minimum, there has been little or no attention paid to the needs of skilled training for people. New hotels being open, workers are not trained to access the high-quality jobs. Those who get the jobs are the low-end jobs, the gardeners, cleaners, et cetera. To date in Grenada, we cannot point to a top-quality internationally-trained chef and other top-quality managers and supervisors in the hotel sector. So training has become, or had became, a bad word in Grenada. And the Ministry of Labor under this new administration had complained bitterly that they are so annoyed and frustrated of having to sign work permits for so many non-nationals to be imported into Grenada that it really was a burden and a real harassment for Prime Minister Deacon Mitchell. He spoke personally about it, that he feels very aggrieved and annoyed that Grenadians do not have the capacity to access and accept some of these jobs which are available in the region. Hence the reason why he embarked upon a skills training initiative program, which is in the process of being built out so that our people can start receiving training in various areas of skill. And this is why he has mandated the Office of Diaspora Affairs to engage the diaspora for Grenadians who have skills in various fields, that we establish a database and we are in the process of developing our own website so that it makes it easy for our nationals abroad to simply access the site, which we hoping will be friendly so that you can just log in, put in your information and someone responds to you appropriately. In addition to that, as I said already, the training exercises in various fields throughout the length and breadth of Grenada, in our community centers and elsewhere, we have to start training our people. I don't know if you all recognize, but the vision of this administration is to make a three-sixty-degree turnaround for the Grenadian people within a three-year period. And already you can see and you can feel the progress that is being made in Grenada. So yes, skills training, we recognize that we need it badly in Grenada. And, um, very soon we will be announcing the establishment or the re-establishment of our website for the diaspora. There was one, but it needs total revamping, so that has been looked into at this time. I want to just piggyback a little bit on the question about agriculture. And to mention that farmers today are receiving farm labor support to clean and replant and clear their fields at the cost of the Ministry of Agriculture. That signals the importance that the government is placing on the development of agriculture in Grenada. So farmers, all they have to do is to identify what needs they have, employ the people, arrangements have been made contract-wise and Ministry of Agriculture pays for the work done on their fields. That, I think, deserves a round of applause for the Ministry of Agriculture. I want to also take this quick opportunity to say to all of you, and I'm sure most of you have property in Grenada, some form of property. Well, just to remind you, there is a tax amnesty which expires on the thirty-first of December this year. Take advantage of it. If you're owing taxes, it will be wiped away. Interests, interest and penalties sometimes even exceed the actual cost of your taxes. If you, and you don't necessarily have to pay off all of it, all you have to do and all you are obligated to do is to enter into an agreement with the Ministry of Finance, the tax department, that I will pay off my taxes over X period at X amount per month and that qualifies you right away for the removal of taxes. And the taxes are across the board, any tax base whatsoever. For your information, there is over sixty million dollars outstanding in taxes owed to the government of Grenada. And this government has taken a very lenient approach to say to nationals, we've given you one full year to try and bring your taxes up to date. Whatever outstanding payments, charges, interest, penalties, we are going to waive that. So in other words, you're getting a pass because we want to clean the slate come twenty twenty-four. So take advantage of the opportunity. I'll pass on now to our ambassador for Cuba.
Thank you very much. Some very deep questions was asked. And the forest lady from Bragjov in particular, who asked about, um, the situation with access to lands. Our General Secretary provided some answers as it relates to the farm road program, making accessible roads so that people can go to the land. That is extremely important area of addressing that particular issue. Because as you know, in particular after Hurricane Ivan, when all of the trees fell, the roads were blocked and people couldn't go to the land. So we had a decrease in our spices as it relates to nutmeg, um, cocoa, cloves and all those areas. So the replanting program with spices generally is one of the strategy to deal with that. Our farmers generally, those in the traditional crop area or are elderly people, right? Um, what we are encouraging also for people who genuinely cannot walk the land, do not have children who could walk the land and want to keep the land, right? They don't want to sell the land. The land bank that Larry spoke about is not only for the government spice program. We have a number of young people that want to go into farming but do not have lands and do not have the capital to get lands. So the idea is to create a national land bank, right? Where the government can list, pay people over a period of time and they have the bank as part, the land as part of a bank so that those who don't have lands and want access to, able to do agriculture can rent and lease and work the land. So that is another strategy in addressing that. Well, Terry also mentioned about the farm labor program because that is also an important aspect to there are people who cannot find labor and there are people who cannot afford to pay labor. And agriculture and agriculture workers and farmers need those kind of incentives. In addition to that, there is a, a program on to ensure that we have a national land use policy. Why that is significant? In the past, we have invested in areas like feeder roads, farm roads. And you might invest and build a nice road to go up into the hills and expect people to plant land, plant food or other crop for trade and investment. But instead, that land may be used for something else. Because as you have roads now, somebody might decide this is a place to build some building. So sometimes the best lands that should be used primarily for agriculture or forestry, you have to ensure that you have the best use of the lands that you have. So you have lands for development, for tourism, you have land for pasture, you have lands for forestry and you have lands for agriculture. So that policy will help us because Grenada is a small place. We have all the issues of climate change and all of the other factors, deforestation and everything like that that is affecting us. Now, on the issue, the transfer of skills is always critical and important. Sometimes you have people who decide to invest, they come to your country, they do big projects and they import to your country people with the skills. And your people get nothing. And that has happened with some of the big hotels. They, they come down with a big chef, right? All the people that get the big money, the top-notch are people from abroad. And the local people are the ones who do the housekeeping and those basic things like that. So training is important. But what will be critical is for us to be able to change the thing around. Because we are suffering from where a lot of our people, skilled people looking for better opportunity to. For example, a lot of our nurses have been attracted to higher salaries in England and in the United States. And they come here and they make very good nurses and very good teachers and other public servants. Some leave their job and they come, they do babysitting and so forth. Now what we need to do is to develop a program where the people who left and acquire skills will be encouraged to go back home and to teach people those skills. But we need to provide incentives because you're not going to leave a well-paid job and go back home. I mean, you want to build a future prosperity, everybody looking for that for your family. So you're not going to leave home and go, you're working here for ten, twenty, whatever, a hundred and something thousand dollars a year and you won't go back home and work for forty, fifty thousand dollars and you can't feed your family. So we had to work out some mechanism that will give you sufficient incentives and encouragement at the same time and able to access and nurture those skills that you have. So it's very, very critical that you keep an open mind, right? In terms of the skills that your children acquire, that they may see it fit that they could go back to Grenada, find a job or a contract for a few years in an institution and come back and give something. We have trained nurses here in, in, who doctors, we have a lot of professionals here. We need to work out with the diaspora affairs some project, even if they need to just visit and teach or online or whatever way, but to transfer some of the skills that you acquire back home. And finally, don't invest all the money that you have in the stock market in America. Because when it crashes, you know what happens. And all those schemes and everything like that, we know you may not get the same amount on your investment. But I think it is, is important for you to see that if you invest back in your country, sometimes simple thing, you know, sometimes buying a two acres of land and have some farmers working. You just want to get, but Grenadians do need to appreciate, to be honest and to make sure that they give you the satisfaction, that you feel comfortable that you could come back and invest. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ambassador. Let me just top up on one point which Ambassador Noel has touched on. And to say to the skilled workers in the United States, Canada, UK, wherever you are, Grenada has, or in fact, Government of Grenada, has a number of government buildings all over Grenada, dilapidated condition to add. And therefore, very shortly, the government will be announcing a program to invite skilled workers and to also invite Grenadian investors to invest in these old dilapidated, broken-down government buildings. And that you would be able to rent back that property once it's refurbished back to government. Because government is renting offices all over the place for police stations, for quotas, for the surgery, for nurses, for doctor office, all over Grenada. And there are existing government buildings in a disrepair condition. So the offer to the diaspora is this is your opportunity to invest in Grenada with a clear contract and obligation arrangement. You refurbish the building, government agrees with you, they will use it for public offices. This would be the term for the period when you are finished, the building then becomes government-owned. By which time you make your profit, you pay back your bank, et cetera, et cetera. It's called a bolt system. So that is an initiative being that will be rolled out very shortly to the diaspora, encouraging you to invest in Grenada. It is probably one of the safest investments that you can get into. Because if you know when you fix that building, you have a tenant and the tenant agrees to pay X for Y period and that pays off your loan and gives you a profit, what more security do you want? It's the most secure investment you could ever dream of having. So this is something for you to think about.
We still have room for a few more questions. It's now eight o'clock. We have to wind up here by eight-thirty. Before we leave, I just want to say again, thank you so much, sisters and brothers, for your generous donations. However, our basket will still be left at the back, so when you leave it and you still have a few change that you want to put in the basket, we will receive it generously. So give a little bit more. Uh, thank you very much. So we have room for some more questions and we also have a few giveaways. We have, um, we have some N D C giveaway, some buttons, a T-shirt, a cap, uh, on your way out or in, in actually while we asking questions, perhaps we can give these away. But keep the basket at the back so that when we leaving, people can put a little bit more.
I don't have a question, I have a proposal. Um, we, we have built all these hotels in Grenada, we look into bringing factory. We, we have built all these hotels in Grenada, we look into bringing factory, um, people to invest in agro-industry and other manufacturing sectors, especially around the hotel sector. My proposal is that if somebody is going to build a hotel in Grenada and they sign an agreement with the government, part of that agreement should be saying that if you're going to build a hotel, it will take five years to build that hotel, one of the first thing investor need to do is identify Grenadians to send abroad to learn to manage that hotel. So by the time the hotel is built, we have Grenadians ready to manage that hotel. Not only that, if the presently, a lot of the developers are saying that they can't find skilled workers in Grenada, they can't find skilled plumbers, skilled tiler, all those kind of thing. Why don't the government say that you want to build a hotel in Grenada, for every skilled tile you bring in, you have to have five or six Grenadians to understudy that tile? So by the next time another hotel has been built in Grenada, we have enough tilers in Grenada that can work on that hotel. These are, these are things that governments look into when they're going to sign these agreements. You want to increase the skill level in Grenada, you have to start it at the beginning. And one, another part of it also, in the first year, the government should say, okay, the first year, five percent of your management should be Grenadians in operation. By the second year of operation, ten percent of your management should be Grenadians. By the fourth year, twenty percent should be Grenadian. By the tenth year, everybody should be Grenadian to manage that hotel. And this is one way you can get these developers to, to, you know, to do these things because they already getting a lot of incentives already. And if we just keep giving away the shop and you're not getting nothing from the shop, it makes no sense because if the Grenadians, again, they're low skilled with paid, the, the, the gardeners and the, and the people that clean hotel, then Grenadians are getting nothing. Because if all the, all the, all the high-paying job money is being sent abroad, what is that doing for Grenada? It's not doing nothing for Grenada. They already getting all incentives, but they not provide any skill for us. That's my proposal.
Well, thank you, thank you very much indeed for this recommendation. And let me, um, let me just say that while it is a rather valuable contribution, we must remember that an investor is coming into our country to make money. And we had a responsibility twenty-five years ago, fifty years ago, to invest in our people, to train our people, to ensure that they have the requisite skills in order to access the job opportunities. We cannot blame an investor and we cannot say to an investor, you are obligated to do this, that or the other, except it is not, once it is illegal, of course, it is illegal. But it is the responsibility of any country to ensure that its workforce is in keeping with the demands of investments in the country. And in our case, the hotel sector, the agriculture sector, the manufacturing sector, it is our government who has to take that responsibility in identifying our needs and training our people appropriately. Thankfully, this new material understands the progress of moving forward. He understands very well for us to access the jobs, we must train our people and not have our people dependent on handouts from any government and referring to them as poor and vulnerable. We are not a poor and vulnerable people. We are people who want to work and to work hard for what we expect, which is a good earning. But for us to do so, we must be trained and access job opportunities with good skills. Quote be, quote us on the job, be polite, et cetera. All these are skills for the workplace. So while I appreciate your comment, my brother, it is the responsibility of each and every one of us to train ourselves and be readily available for the job opportunities. And thankfully, this government is taking the lead and not waiting for the people to go and train. This government is saying, I'm going to hold you by the hand and get you trained in whatever field that you wish to be trained in because we gotta get ready, get ready, get ready. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Terry. And of course, the government has acted to Brother Beggs. The government has acted in the manner you have described. Since we came to office, we have removed tuition fee, eight hundred and ten EC per year for TAMCC. We've removed the tuition fee for NULO. So the government is going to pay two point five million per annum in tuition fees for NULO and TAMCC. What that is intended to do is to increase access to tertiary, technical and academic training at these two institutions so that the programs for building up our skill competency is going to be invested in the TAMCC and NULO. And that's the reason why I did a twenty-minute video. If you noticed the video earlier, the largest part of the twenty minutes was spent around training. You heard the Prime Minister emphasize training. He spoke about the ten billion from the World Bank to invest in TAMCC, in equipment and training. So we are doing what you said, Brother Beggs. We are actually expecting, as Terry alluded to, to increase the capacity within Grenada to train Grenadians, to take the high-paying jobs across sectors and industries. But you have to put the investment in and that's what this Prime Minister is showing leadership with. Waive the tuition fee, increase the investments in NULO, in technical and in TAMCC, in technical, uh, um, skills and equipment so that when the tourism and related opportunities come up, we don't have to rely on an outsider, Brother Beggs. We do not have to rely on an outsider to send somebody to train. We are investing in our capacity ourselves and we spending the money required to do so. But thanks for the recommendation. We're doing exactly what you proposed, but we localizing the development and some of the expertise we have in the diaspora here, we will call on that, uh, expertise. In fact, I can tell you, a proposal has already been so, so submitted, well, in fact, it's a proposal I was not capitalized under the previous administration. So the purpose, the persons in Canada who have reached out to me, I've been a member of the TAMCC board, they have reached out to me to ask for our administration to capitalize on an opportunity the previous administration did not capitalize on. And that is specialist training in TAMCC for repairs and rebuilding transmission, automatic transmissions. In Grenada, ninety percent of the vehicles are automatic. So you want to increase the competence of persons to repair automatic transmissions and to rebuild them with a plant in Grenada at TAMCC. The persons were involved in, who were involved in that before, reached out to me to ask for us to re-engage them, that they were doing it as a contribution. This person is from Grenada in, in Canada and they were doing it as a contribution to come in and put on the program automatic transmission repairs and rebuilding. That is going to be a big opportunity and a big investment in our skills development because we have ninety percent of our vehicles automatic. So you have to prepare people to take those jobs and those opportunities. Thank you very much for listening. We have a question on the mic.
Good night to everyone. It takes approximately nine months for a woman to bring forth a baby. It takes approximately one year for a banana plant to give you a fruit. Typically, when you're employed, you get a probationary period of about sixty to ninety days and in some cases, one year. If we are talking transformation, we can't be waiting for two years and five years. So for example, with diplomatic appointments, I was shocked when we had our minister sitting with a permanent secretary saying that it would take six months to make changes. We gotta move away from that. Added to that, we usually have meetings of the United Nations every year. We cannot continue with the planning one month in advance and in some ti, in some cases, days before you know who are coming up. And what are they doing, in my opinion? In a lot of cases, only a joyride. So transformation has to have some roots, it has to have some planning, it has to has a lot more than that. On the question of the diaspora, today for nationals, we get seventy-five thousand dollars in terms of concessionary values when you return. The government of Grenada, over the years, has had a CBI program where an investor can come to Grenada, get a passport, how much he puts forward? Approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And after three years, he could walk away with his money and he is happy. What are we doing for Grenadians? Who, when they retire, come back to Grenada, invest more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And in some cases, they live for ten years, bringing back a lot more. It is time that the government address that concern because it's only twenty-eight thousand US dollars in terms of the value of items for returning nationals. Added to that, those nationals will be coming back with knowledge and skills. So we can't be waiting six months, one year for action. As far as I know, this diaspora aspect has been dealt with, spoken about for over fifteen years, longer than that. So we need to have a plan in place, not just a website, a lot more than that.
Sisters and brothers, I believe that might be our last question because we have to save a little bit of time at the end to clear up the room, all right? We have to vacate here by eight thirty. So, uh, as I said, that would be the last question, but just before, just before, uh, the General Secretary answer the question, allow me to also, for the first time here in New York, invite the Counsel General, our new Counsel General, to introduce himself. It should be a short introduction, but you will have some more time in the near future to meet him. He just came back from the airport. Brother Brizan.
Good evening, you're hearing me now, right? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. To satisfy your curiosity, I am Michael Brizan. But apart from that, that's just a name. Yeah, apart from Michael Brizan, you may be wondering, so where did he come from? And apparently, somebody in, in the audience has the answer, but probably not everybody heard the answer. Okay. So I am new to this position, I am three weeks in, um, I am three weeks in New York, three weeks and one day. I got here on the fifteenth of this September, went to the office on the Monday following, which should have been about the eighteenth, and since then, I've been going. As Brother Bowen said to you, I'm just back from the airport because I had to see Minister off, he has to catch a flight, but it's not about Minister, it's about me, right? So I've been in Trinidad for the last ten years, working at the office in Trinidad. Yes, we have a office in Trinidad, yes? And I've been there for the last ten years. So by way of experience, I would have gained a lot from the Trinidad situation. Yes, you are different, everybody different, all right? But that does not say that experience gained on the ground in Trinidad would not be of use here. I think it's of very much fitting and useful in this situation. The difference though is that, um, you have quite more groups that, that function in New York than in Trinidad. And so, like in Trinidad, having to work with limited groups, here in New York, I would like to be able to work with all the groups that are here in, in New York. In fact, we have a meeting and notice is going to be going out, I think it may have gone, went out on Friday, if not, it's gonna go out tomorrow. Just, just rolling about like that. Right. If not, it's gonna go out tomorrow, inviting as many groups as we can to a meeting at the office on the twenty-fourth of this month. The twenty-fifth is a holiday, I think. Don't say I say, I think it's a holiday. Yeah? A Grenada holiday, sorry. Yeah? We Grenada, we Grenada, so what we say is Grenada, right? So we hoping that as many groups get the invitation and attend. We cannot have your full membership, but because we cannot house everybody, we hoping that you can send two representatives each to the meeting, yeah? In that way, we will do further introduction, we'll talk about what we, you know, hope to achieve, not what I hope to achieve personally, but what we hope to achieve. It is not me, it is we, yeah? The priority item seems to be though, independence, because that's the nearest target item that we have. Independence is February, uh, independence is going to be launched on the thirty-first of this month. So we get a theme and that type of thing, what the plans are, but we too, Nick, Nick, I've already been in touch with Nick. We too will look at what we can do in respect of independence. But after independence, Grenada is still there for us to serve, yeah? So we need to know what and how we are going to contribute towards the rebuilding, the continuous, continuation of the building process for Grenada. So that is not for me to dictate to you, but for you to, among your, your, your different groups, decide what you want to do. I am available, I am here, I'm here to work with you, I'm here to work with all of you. And I want to make a little bit of an edgy statement here. Working with you, from my standpoint, I give no regard to your political affiliation. You are a Grenadian, whether you blue, green, yellow, pink, and for me, what is important is that you contribute to the building of Grenada, yeah? You contribute towards the building of Grenada. As an NNP, or NDC, sorry, you would be concerned with, you'll be concerned with remaining in office. Anybody will be concerned remain in office. But as a Counsel General, my concern is that we build Grenada, yeah? So I'll be there for, I'll be, I'll be contracted by telephone, I don't have a telephone of my own as yet, but you can call the office if you need me. The services of the office continue, yeah? The services of the office continue and let us all work together, work together to build Grenada.
Much, thank you, thank you very much. Honorary Counsel General Brizan, we happy to have you and we look forward to working with you over the term that you are here, your tour of duty. Look forward to working with you. So let me just quickly respond to the brother on the six months and in some instances, it did take a little longer for some appointments to be made in terms of diplomatic appointments and he linked that to the necessity for, uh, transformation to have been planned and planting seeds of transp, transformation. That's correct. And we do, uh, regret that we did take some time for some of the appointments. You know, interestingly, to the brother and to everyone else, when you inherited the kind of public service we inherited, I, I want a gentleman, I want a gentleman to hear me, yes, yes. When you inherited the country we inherited and the public service we inherited after ten years. When you inherited the country we inherited and the public service we inherited after ten years, the last ten years of the NNP rule, what we were able to achieve with these diplomatic appointments in the time we did is a record. An absolute record of performance based on what we inherited. So, the recalling of diplomats, ambassadors, honorary consuls, consul generals, that's supposed to be a standard routine activity. But when you have to search and compile your database of who serving where, and when you look at the list that we inherited and some of the nationals who were representing Grenada that we did not know, having the patience to be on top of exactly who were your diplomats, where they were, what were their office, was vital. That research took time, but it was necessary because of how it was done before. That was a major factor in why it took time and why we wanted to invest the time necessary to not make the mistakes that we inherited with some of the diplomatic appointments. We had persons serving as diplomats that we discovered. That's not how governments and countries are run. It must be seamless. So, the recalling took time because some people had to be found so that they could be reminded to be recalled. It's a standard. So, having done that, we can properly know, reappoint who necessarily will be reappointed and to make new appointments, which is part of the transition that goes with any new government. You bring the people that you want to help with your transformation agenda, your policy, your manifesto commitments, and those who will remain, especially those, some of whom are career diplomats, they continue in other fields. Some career diplomats who are appointed through the public service and not politically will have continuation and reassignments or recall to return to the foreign service in Grenada. So, you have the career diplomats, and there were few. And there were very little or no succession planning in career diplomats. So, under our administration, we will be re-establishing a school for training a future generation of diplomats. And that is one of the earliest commitments of the new leader. So, that is part of it. So, we do apologize, it took time, but I hope you understand why it took time, and it could have taken a lot more time. But we were very diligent about how we wanted to ensure that we properly recall everyone, make sure we have all the information of who exists out there. Because I wanna repeat, we did not know, because nothing was handed to us, and we discovered some diplomats were serving this country. In fact, some of them reported not to the foreign service, they reported to the man. Then we have, then we have the final comment about the returning residents. That is important, and we want to ensure that there is some amount of equity because a lot of our returning nationals are significant investors. We heard some of it from the ambassador for Cuba earlier, Glenn. Yeah, so you have returning nationals, but it is the used items that you get a seventy-five percent duty on, the used items, not on investment you are planning to make. If you, any one of you planning to return to Grenada and want to make some specific investments, you want to open a hotel, you want to open a factory, you wanna establish a business, you go to the Grenada Investment Development, GIDC, the Grenada Investment Development Corporation, and there is a suite, a suite of investment concessions and investment opportunities that will exceed the seventy-five percent on your used items and your home appliances and your new items that you're returning to Levi. So, don't use that seventy-five percent as the overall percentage you will get if you're going to come back and want to make investment and open a business. There are significant amounts of investment opportunities and concessions. Well, if you could go on the GIDC website now, and you are there now, does it not list the investment and the different categories and the concessions? It does. And then, of course, you have the major investments through the Citizen by Investment Program. I could let Terry speak a little more on that, but that is a separate vehicle for foreign direct investments and partnership investments from under the CBI program. So, just for everybody's benefit, the seventy-five percent is what you get on your domestic returning national items, car, your household items, and so on. So, that's critical. But investment decisions are made differently, and you can have an opportunity to get a hundred percent on machinery, various percentages on various aspects of your investments. Terry, I'll give you an opportunity to address that aspect as well under the CBI.
Thank you, thank you, General Secretary. First of all, let me just say that the diaspora office is not just about a website. As a matter of fact, there is a five-year policy document which is presently being reviewed and revised. And we are getting assistance from the IOM, which is the International Office for Migration, an entity which is part of the United Nations. So, we are moving in a direction to form and develop a, first of all, a five-year strategic development plan for the diaspora office. So, I hope that, my friend at the back there, I believe he's Campbell, he looked like a Campbell. He walks like a Campbell, he talks like a Campbell. So, he is a Campbell. Also, let me just clarify the matter of the CBI, Citizenship by Investment. He spoke about the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand US dollar being invested by non-Grenadians, and they get it back when they're going. That is not so at all, that is totally false. They can make this as a direct payment into the National Development Fund. That's the Transformation Fund, and they can obtain their passport. Or they can invest in an approved project as an investment as a non-Grenadian. So, it's a different component. The Grenadian who is coming back is entitled to all the incentives that are available. And as a matter of fact, this government is also now looking at the possibility of structuring the CBI with a little twitch to it to provide further benefits to now the Grenadian nationals. So, stay tuned, more is coming. Thank you.
To make before we wind up the meeting, I just wanna say that we are grateful that you share here with us your time this afternoon so that we can celebrate and commemorate the NDC's thirty-sixth anniversary. The party to celebrate continues at twelve-fifteen Flatbush, the Nutmeg House, after here, all right? So, you can go to the Nutmeg House, twelve-fifteen Flatbush Avenue, after this meeting and continue celebration. But at this point, I want to invite up to the microphone the NDC New York chapter's PRO to say a special thank you to all of you. Brother Mike Roberts.
Hello, hello, okay. My task is to wrap up what has been a really, really excellent weekend. It started with a meet, it started with a meeting with our chapter, with our visiting delegation. Last night, I don't know about anybody else, but I danced the night away and had fun. And it's so great to see this wonderful Grenadian Karaku, Pitty Martney crowd here tonight. You must give yourselves a big round of applause. Little bit of housekeeping. First, I'd like to thank, profusely thank, on behalf of the national, of the National Democratic Chapter in New York, our visiting delegation, Minister Andy Williams, who was here earlier and had to catch a plane to South Korea, the awesome General Secretary, Mr. Larry Barry, our diaspora ambassador, and my counterpart at the national, at our national party in Grenada, Mr. Terry Forrester, and the incredible Glenn Newell, our capable and able ambassador to Cuba. Thank you very much for gracing the diaspora with your presence. Last night, we, we, our program was supported by a number of people, a number of organizations, and we were not able to say a proper thank you to them. So, I'll take the opportunity right now to thank a couple of sponsors. Wealth Builders Global, whose mission is to provide people worldwide with tools and support needed to change and empower their lives for the better through blockchain banking. For more information, please text your name to nine-two-nine-two-three-four-nine-five-six-four. I can probably give you that number again, nine-two-nine-two-three-four-nine-five-six-four. We wanna thank Dimitri USA LFH Corp., another sponsor for our event, Miss Grenada USA, and the Grenadian American Extinction Association, and our awesome awardees. Our master ceremonies for last night's program, the incredible Wayne Gus Augustine Master DJ, we call him Master Mix. Our decorator, Miss Lindona Lindy James, our caterer, and I just wanna speak a little bit about our caterer, Chef Gibbs. Many of you all might have seen him around catering some great food. But what you would not know about him is that Chef Bills is not a cook. He is a qualified chef, French trained chef, as a matter of fact, and worked at some of the great, the biggest hotels in the city, including the Hemsley, and trained by some of the best chef. And that is, he is probably the most experienced Caribbean chef, not just a Grenadian chef, in Brooklyn, New York. So, you need to give him a big hand around the applause for that. We'd like to thank the proprietors of the American Legion Hall, where we are today. Ride along, providing all the great service, Mr. Junior George. And of course, I'll be remiss if I left here today, I would be kinda hung by the neck or something if I did not say a special thank you to the hard-working NDC chapter's executive. And I'm gonna put him on spot here a little while. I see Mr. Ian Carlton across there, could you stand and just tell the, yeah? This is, this is our vice chair. Right next to him is Mr. Anthony Howard. Tony, just get up, please. He's our treasurer. This is the deputy treasurer, Miss Nicole Philip. I see at the back our secretary, Miss Denise Roberts. And right, I think right next to her, don't hold it to me, I see the chair of our membership committee and the deputy PRO, Miss Helen Lewis. She's in the back there. Did I leave out anybody? Of course, our chair, Mr. Bernard Bowen. I wanna finally just say to all of our supporters, support, support our transformation process and program. We're all Grenadians, that is what we have in common. That is our charge. Our charge is to continue to build Grenada, Karaku, and Pitty Martney do get home safely, and thanks again.
Just a quick, just a quick point, ladies and gentlemen, before you depart. And I know Brother Bowen would accede to this request. Ladies and gentlemen, I wanna just ask each and every one of you just to stand and to wish our Prime Minister a happy birthday today before you leave.
Yes, yes.
Happy birthday to our Prime Minister, Deacon Mitchell. Over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. We were about to sing that happy birthday song, I was waiting to do that, yeah?
Well, let's start it.
And also, while we wish the Prime Minister happy birthday today, tomorrow is the birthday of our ambassador to Cuba, so we can also wish him happy birthday. As I said earlier, we have some giveaways. Our secretary has the giveaways, a cap, a T-shirt, and some buttons. Please get to her, she can help you. And again, the announcement, twelve-fifteen, the party continues at twelve-fifteen Flatbush Avenue. That is at the corner of Avenue D, twelve-fifteen Flatbush Avenue, at the corner of Avenue D. The party continues after this meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, friends of Grenada and the NDC, we thank you very much for coming out, thank you, thank you, thank you, and get home safe. Thank you again. And don't forget, leave a few, leave a few change in the box at the back on your way out. Thank you.